All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the continued public meeting from April 16th concerning the Isaguac Highlands Retail Site Development Permit, the Isaguac Highlands Medical Office Administrative Site Development Permit, and the Isaguac Highlands Self-Storage Administrative Site Development Permit. Before we get started with the continued cross-examination of Mr. Niven, we have some administrative things to do. We have minutes from April 16th.
Mr. Chairman, will we approve the minutes for the April 16th meeting?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes motion carries, so thank you. Mr. Schneider will turn the time over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Niven, would you acknowledge, please, that you're still under oath?
I remain adereve.
And is your microphone turned on?
I believe it is. Can you hear me okay?
Mr. Niven, I think at the conclusion, or near the conclusion of the hearing last time, I had introduced Exhibit S-112, which was Ms. Sloman's letter to Tia Heim telling IHIFC that their plat would be processed under the procedures and the replacement regulations. You recall that?
Generally, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to introduce a new exhibit now that is a follow-up communication between Tia Heim and Lucy Sloman on that issue. It's Exhibit S-113, I believe.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Niven, the first part, there are actually two documents as part of Exhibit 113. The first part of it is a subsequent email exchange between Tia Heim, in which she protests to Ms. Sloman that, in fact, the city has already acknowledged IHIFC is vested to the development agreement. And then Ms. Sloman responds with an email saying, you know, here's our response. You see that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I really want to turn then to the response, which is the letter dated April 15th to Tia Heim from Lucy Sloman. And you are copied on that letter. Have you reviewed this letter previously?
I have not.
So, in this letter, Ms., you can take as much time as you want to review it, but I think it's a fair summary to say that Ms. Sloman basically says at some length and cites some case law to defend her position that IHIFC's plat is not vested to the procedures in the development agreement. If you haven't seen this letter, did you consult with Ms. Sloman before she sent it?
I did not.
You are aware, are you not, that Polygon's plat, its single-family plat, that was noticed at the same time as IHIFC's plat was processed under the regulations in the development agreement, correct?
As far as I'm aware, I believe it followed Appendix L.
Yes. And in fact, the, it went to the, not to this commission, but to the other commission, correct?
Urban Village Development Commission.
And they, in fact, granted or recommended to the city council that the preliminary plat be approved more than a year ago under the procedures in Appendix L, correct?
I'm unaware of the timing of that. I assume that their recommendation was for support, since that was the decision ultimately rendered by the city council. I was not involved in that process directly.
Well, you are the one who affirmed that Polygon was vested to the procedures in the development agreement, correct?
Did you want to reference a specific letter or email?
Well, yes, I can provide that to you, but don't you recall that you are the person who Ms. Sloman deferred to on vesting for their plat application?
So, vesting to the development agreement, and ultimately, those conversations were deferred to myself, yes. As it relates specifically to Polygon's single-family north plat, I don't recall if I was specifically consulted on that determination.
Okay. I have a couple of emails I'd like to show you then. I think these are S-114 and S-115. So, Mr. Niven, at the top of Exhibit S-114, there's an email exchange between Ms. Sloman and Nick Abdelnauer of Polygon, correct?
Yes.
And it's in response to questions about, from Mr. Abdelnauer, about the pending applications, including the single-family north preliminary plat, correct?
Yes.
And what is, what does Ms. Sloman say about you investing in her email?
So, this reads, "Nick, thanks for the schedule!" exclamation point. "Keith is the king of vesting, so please ask him for the memo on vesting."
Okay. And have you been referred to in other circumstances as the king of vesting?
I don't know that I've ever been referred to as the king of vesting, other than through this email.
Okay. And then if you could turn to S-115, please. Again, it's the concluding email that I want to draw your attention to. If you want to look at the preceding ones, it's fine, but S-115 was written to Jean Lynn from David Avanel at Polygon about a month after Exhibit S-114? One in July and one maybe five weeks later in August?
Yes.
Okay. And what is, what is, well, what is the relationship between Mr. Avanel and Mr. Abdelnauer?
Mr. Avanel used to work for Polygon Northwest, so he would have been an employee of Nick Abdelnauer.
Okay. And then, so what is, the portion of the email is, the first couple of sentences are addressed to Jean Lynn, and then what does he say to you? If you could read that for us, please.
I'm sorry. I'm reading the Jean Lynn email to...
No, I don't mean to be confusing.
Sorry.
I'm looking at the top.
Oh, just the top, okay.
And there's a paragraph that begins Keith.
Okay. So, this is from David Avanel to Jean Lynn. And it says, "Keith, I understand you are currently out of the office. However, upon your return, I would appreciate your confirmation that this Westridge Single-Family-North project is deemed complete and vested to the Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement. Based off previous clarification from Lucy, comma, it appears you are the city staff member to provide this vesting confirmation for us. Thank you for your help."
Okay. And so, Polygon looked to you to confirm that they were vested to the procedures in the Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement for their plat application, correct?
Well, it doesn't specifically say procedures. It says, "We look, we would like to understand if we're deemed complete and vested to the Highlands Development Agreement."
Right. But in fact, so this is basically both process and substance, correct?
It doesn't specify that.
Well, in fact, the plat, Polygon's single-family north plat, was processed according to both the substance and the procedures in the development agreement, correct?
That would be a question for Ms. Sloman, I believe.
Okay. Well, I'm going to hand out a copy of an exhibit that's already in the record. It's S-4. For your convenience, I'll hand you another copy.
Thank you.
You're welcome to confirm.
I believe you. I'm sure it's in one of those binders.
So, what is this document, Mr. Niven?
So, this document would be the formal recommendation from the Urban Village Development Commission to the city council, and it's dated the 10th of May, 2018.
Okay. And if you look at the last page, you are copied on this?
I appear to be copied, yes, sir.
Okay. And why don't you read the first whereas clause for us, please?
Whereas, even though the Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement was terminated on March 28, 2018, and replacement regulations have been enacted, this application was vested to the now-terminated development agreement and was reviewed under those regulations. I apologize. There's like weird audible feedback from her device that's really distracting. I don't know if anybody else can hear it, but I can. Yeah, it's, that's better. Thank you. Sorry.
So, again, after Polygon asked for confirmation from you that they were vested, they ended up being processed under both the substance and the procedures of the development agreement, correct? Or their single-family north plat that was noticed on the same day as IHIFC's plat?
So, I really can't answer that question. I really do believe that's a better question for Ms. Sloman in terms of she was the staff person who performed the permit review for that application.
Well, Mr. Niven, you will agree that the recommendation from the Development Commission, Exhibit S-4, to the city council, says it was reviewed under the vested development agreement, correct?
It does say that, yes.
Okay. So, now we have the new exhibit that I offered a little while ago, which has Ms. Sloman telling my client, IHIFC, that it's going to be processed under the replacement regulations.
S-113?
Yes.
Okay.
So, explain to us, please, why two plat applications that were noticed on the same day, they were both applied for before the end of the build-out period, why one of them was processed under the development agreement and received approval a year ago, and the other one hasn't even received a staff report to a commission and is being processed under the replacement regulations? Explain why one plat application is being treated fundamentally different than the other.
So, I was not part of drafting this April 15th, 2019, letter, so I don't, I don't think I'm the best person to ask that question of, since I wasn't part of making a specific determination on processing. So, again, I think I would suggest that be asked of Ms. Sloman.
Well, Mr., I will ask Ms. Sloman about this, Mr. Niven, but again, you, as the Development Director, are responsible for vesting determinations, correct?
In consultation with the city attorney. That's what the city council says.
So, you are responsible whether Ms. Sloman talked to you or not, or her determination that my client is not vested to the procedures in the development agreement, correct?
I'm responsible for that decision, yes.
Okay. So, can you provide any explanation for why your department is discriminating against IHIFC and treating them differently than Polygon?
Not right here, right now. If that is something that your client would like a response to, I'm more than happy to work with the city attorney to draft one for you.
Mr. Niven, I'd like to go back to Exhibit C-4. It is already in the record. And again, I have a, I only have one extra copy right now.
I do.
And Mr. Lell asked you questions about it at the last hearing, which is why I'm doing so. So, this is the, there are actually two email exchanges here, just to refresh everyone's recollection. The first email exchange, starting at the bottom of the third page and working backwards to the front, is an email exchange between you and Tia Heim about whether IHIFC's applications, we're now talking about the SDP and ASDP applications, are vested, correct?
We started with an understanding, the discussion originally started with, were the applications complete?
Yes.
And then they migrated towards vesting to the development agreement.
Right. And in response to Ms. Heim pressing you on that and asking for, "Please confirm whether my client is vested or not," your response was the word-and-word answer, "Yes."
Yes.
Okay. And then, the last two email, or the last three email exchanges in Exhibit C-4 are not with my client, but with Ms. Sloman, correct?
Yes.
And Ms. Sloman tells you, basically, does she not, that your "yes" is misleading because it's the position of you and Ms. Sloman that my client is not vested unless the council agrees, correct?
She indicated that she was confused by my response and thought it could be clearer.
And so, when she expressed confusion, what was your answer?
My answer was, "They are vested at this moment under the development agreement. If the council removes the proposed vesting language, they will lose their vested status."
So, I read that as saying you acknowledged to Ms. Sloman that IHIFC was not vested, based on the definition of vesting that you explained to us in your testimony at the last hearing. If vest, and, I don't want to compound my question. Go ahead and answer the one I just asked, please.
So, again, the term vesting under the development agreement, you know, I think we've talked about that, whether that was a correct use of that terminology based on state statute. You know, my, my use of the word vesting in this response to Ms. Sloman was, at the time, the development agreement was still in force, that they could build per the terms of that agreement. And so, that was the intent of my response to Ms. Sloman, and I think I acknowledged last time, the use of the word vested may not have been the correct terminology from myself through this exchange.
Well, Mr. Niven, you knew that my client understood very well the meaning of the word vested, didn't you?
At this time, which was November of '17, we were having conversations with your client about vesting and the draft language that was being proposed in the replacement regulations. So, from that, I would assume, yes, vesting was important to them. I don't know how much they understood about vesting. I assume they understood the terminology and how it's used.
Well, my client, is it fair to say, understood the word vesting the way state law describes vesting and the way the cases describe vesting?
Since your client is an attorney, I would assume, yes.
Okay. And so, you were, if I had to understand, that you were using the vested, the word vested in some different meaning that only you and Ms. Sloman understood?
We were using the term vested as we had discussed it with the city attorney.
Well, okay. So, what did you and the city attorney discuss about vesting?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to respectfully object to the extent that this is bearing into attorney-client privileged information.
Well, I would note that the city's witnesses have repeatedly referred to conversations with the city attorney, and Mr. Lell has actually specifically asked questions about conversations with the city attorney. And it is without doubt, in my mind, that the, any attorney-client privilege has been waived by the repeated testimony about those conversations. But I don't expect you all to make a decision on that. So, if Mr. Niven doesn't want to answer a question about his conversation with the city attorney, I won't press it, but I'm not pressing it only because I think it is a legal issue that I'm not expecting you to resolve. But I think any assertion of attorney-client privilege has been waived repeatedly in this hearing.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Niven, I'll let you decide whether you're going to respond to that question or not.
So, I'll defer to the city attorney on whether they think I should respond to that question.
Mr. Niven, if the content of that discussion has already been daylighted in this proceeding, I don't have a problem. There should not be a problem with you referring to it again in your, your response to Mr. Schneider. However, if, if answering his question candidly would require you to divulge information that has not been publicly disclosed, I would advise you against doing that.
And I would just, I don't want to create any misunderstandings. I don't think the city can selectively decide what attorney-client privileged communications it's going to waive and which it's not. If you, if there's a waiver and a discussion, it applies to all communications on the same issue. And that, that question basically invites selective decisions tactically about what they're going to reveal and what they're not, and that is improper.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's not the city's intent to engage in any type of a selective waiver. My point in advising Mr. Niven is that obviously, the, the city staff, as all city staffs do, has confidential communications with its city attorney, and those are distinct from communications which are deliberately daylighted. To the city's knowledge, there has not been any deliberate waiver of the attorney-client privilege with respect to communications that were intended to remain confidential as between the attorney and staff.
Well, let me rephrase my question. Again, I think Mr. Lell and I have a fundamental and profound disagreement about the waiver issue here. But, Mr. Niven, I don't want you to answer my question if you're going to tell me only some of what the city attorney told you. I want you to either tell me everything or nothing at all. I don't want you to be selective and choose.
And if I could briefly address the witness, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Mr. Niven, feel free to answer that question if you can do that without waiving the attorney-client privilege as, as it relates to information that has not been publicly daylighted.
That information has not been publicly daylighted as part of these proceedings, that I can recall.
Okay. So, Mr. Niven, going back then to Exhibit C-4, this email exchange between Ms. Heim and you was the follow-up on a meeting the previous day, correct? In fact, at that meeting, Ms. Heim specifically asked you to confirm that IHIFC's applications were vested, and you told her to put it in an email and you would confirm, correct?
So, specifically, what she's asking for in her email is, "We would like the city to confirm our understanding that the following land use permit applications have been deemed complete per 9.1 of Appendix L to the development agreement." So, I answered that part of the question and said, "Unless you have received requests from city staff for additional information, these application, our applications are viewed as, quote, 'complete,' unquote, per the terms of the development agreement," which is why I believe she followed up with her subsequent email because she wanted a response to the second half of her question, which was about vesting.
Correct. And you answered yes.
She asked specifically if we are vested to the development agreement, and I said yes.
Okay. And then you have a private, internal, within-the-city exchange with Ms. Sloman, not with my client, in which you basically agree with Ms. Sloman that we're not vested. It's up to the city council, correct?
I had a exchange with one of my staff who thought my email was unclear.
And why don't you specifically read Ms. Sloman's language to you?
From November 22 at 9:29, that one?
From November 22 at 10:36 AM.
Okay. So, that one, and it's, the title of this email exchange between Lucy and myself is "Vesting." And her email, which was probably sent from her iPhone, says, "Shouldn't that be clear in the response?" question mark.
Yes. And you didn't respond to that, did you?
I did not.
And you didn't make it clear to IHIFC that by saying they were vested, you really meant it was up to the city council, did you?
I believed my email exchange with Ms. Heim was clear.
Yes. You told them they were vested, correct?
To the development, to the development agreement, which is what the question was.
Yes. So, and internally with Ms. Sloman, you, you take a different position?
I don't believe I did. I believe I clarified what I said to Ms. Heim.
Okay. You said to Ms. Sloman, "They are vested at this moment under the development agreement. If the council removes the proposed vesting language, they will lose their vested status," correct?
That is what I said, yes.
Okay. And is this part of your private understanding of vesting that you didn't share with my client?
So, we're circling back to the same question that Mr. Lell objected to, right?
I don't know, are we?
Seems like it.
I wasn't aware. I was asking for an attorney-client privileged communication. I was asking you why you didn't tell my client, why you told Ms. Sloman that they're not vested. It depends on what the city council decides.
I'm sorry if there was, I missed it.
Yes, there was a question, Mr. Niven. Why didn't you tell my client clearly what you told Ms. Sloman, that vesting depended on what the city council did in the future?
Because I believe that my email to Ms. Heim was clear, and if she had... And if she had confusion about my response, I would have expected she would have emailed me back.
Ms. Heim asked you, following up on a meeting, whether the applications were vested, and you said, "Yes." What is lacking in clarity about that?
I didn't say her email to me was unclear. I said that if she was unclear about my response, my one-word response, or Patrick, who was also CC'd on the email, or Gary, any of them could have emailed me back to say, "Is this what you mean?" Because it's a very short response. But I didn't get any follow-up emails, other than from my staff, who was confused about this issue.
So what is ambiguous or unclear about the word "yes"? You said, "Yes, you are vested." What is unclear about that, Mr. Nevin? What requires clarification?
So the question was, are we vested to the development agreement? The answer was, "Yes." There could have been a follow-up question about mitigation, about process, about all sorts of things that I think your client had questions about.
Well, the development agreement says you vest to both mitigation and process, doesn't it?
That's what you believe, yes.
Mr. Nevin, are you denying that there is language in the development agreement that says that what one vests to is both mitigation and process?
During the term of the agreement, yes.
Mr. Nevin, you were asked last time about whether you've always acted with integrity in this matter. Do you recall that?
I believe so.
Yes. And you referred specifically to the AICP Code of Ethics and Professional Conduct?
And the IEDC Code of Ethics.
What number are we at? I have a copy of the AICP Code of Ethics.
I do.
Is this the Code of Ethics and Professional Conduct, one of the codes you referred to last time?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'd like you to turn to Section B, please, called "Our Rules of Conduct."
Yes.
And would you read the introductory paragraph and then Rule Number One, please?
"We adhere to the following rules of conduct, and we understand that our institute will enforce compliance with them. If we fail to adhere to these rules, we could receive sanctions, the ultimate being the loss of our certification. Number one underneath that, we shall not deliberately or with reckless indifference fail to provide adequate, timely, clear, or accurate information on planning issues."
I think that was "and accurate" rather than "or accurate." But, yes. So let's compare Rule of Conduct Number One with Exhibit C4, please, the email exchange with Ms. Heim and with Ms. Sloman that we've been talking about. You think, in light of your email exchange with Ms. Sloman, that what you told Tia Heim was an adequate answer to her question?
I do.
And do you think it was a timely answer to her question in the sense that we are in the middle of my client doing its very best to get confirmation from the city that it's vested, and you've now told them that they are?
I think the exchange was timely, yes, if that was your question.
Was it clear and accurate, in light of your communication with Ms. Sloman, who told you it wasn't?
I believed it was clear. I didn't agree with my employee on this issue.
Okay. So you thought it was perfectly consistent with Rule One of the Rule of Conduct to tell my client it was vested when you admitted to Ms. Sloman that you meant something else, and you didn't follow up with my client?
I believe that I was, I believe that my actions were compliant with subsection B1 of the AICP Code of Ethics, yes.
Okay. So let's turn then, if we could, please, to Rule 20.
Rule 20.
Would you read that for us, please?
Sure. 20 says, "We shall not unlawfully discriminate against another person."
Okay. So isn't that what your department is doing between my client and Polygon in the treatment of the plat applications, treating one as vested and the other not?
I do not believe, I do not believe so, no.
Okay. So why is it not discriminating against my client to process their application under the replacement regulations when you processed Polygon under the development regulations?
So I'm assuming that because the processing of the preliminary plat letter response dated April 15th was drafted by Ms. Sloman in conjunction with the city attorney, I believe it's lawful. I would hope the city attorney's not giving us unlawful recommendations.
Well, I'm not asking, first of all, you once again asserted that your conduct is based on communications that you won't tell us about with the city attorney. But I'm not asking for the rationale now. I'm asking you to admit that regardless of the rationale, you're treating one applicant differently and worse than the other, even though there's no lawful grounds to choose to treat them differently.
Well, I think, I thought you asked me if I believed we were consistent with Rule 20. And I believe that because it talks about unlawfully discriminating, I believe we are compliant with Rule 20, given the fact that we're sending out information in concert with consult from the city attorney.
So, so if the city attorney advises you to discriminate, that makes it lawful?
I object to that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm trying to understand your question, or your answer, Mr. Nevin.
My answer is that the city contracts with a law firm to give us legal advice and recommendations on our administration of city code. So I'm assuming that we're doing that in this case.
All right. So again, to bring this to a conclusion, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're telling us is, you can't provide any grounds for discriminating the way your department is doing, other than the city attorney must have okayed it?
I'm suggesting that that's probably a better question for Ms. Sloman.
Well, I'm asking you if you have--
I personally do not know.
So, Mr. Nevin, I still struggle to understand what you mean by vesting. You apparently mean something different than the, than people outside the city mean by the term. So exactly how do you, are you saying vesting means you vested until the regulations change, or what?
No. The way that I understood vesting was that there was vesting during the build-out period, and there was vesting that survived the end of the build-out period through the term of the development agreement. At that time, then, if you were vested to that contract, and that contract was terminated, then you were no longer vested to that contract. That's what I understood.
Okay. So you're, again, I'm asking a question because I really don't understand the answer. Are you saying then that vesting meant one thing before the end of the build-out period and something less different and lesser after the end of the build-out period?
After the end of the term, not the build-out period. Because the agreement survived the end of the build-out period until replacement regulations were enacted.
Okay. Well, since, again, then that just added to my confusion. Since you told my client it was vested, and then later countersigned a letter in March acknowledging that they had submitted complete applications, and you're now saying they could vest until the effective date of the replacement regulations, why aren't you treating them as vested?
I think we, I thought I answered this already. They were vested to the development agreement so long as the development agreement was in force. When it was terminated, their vesting status terminated with it.
Okay. So again, your understanding of vesting, that it lasts only so long as the regulations aren't changed by the city council?
Vesting as it related to the development agreement specifically. Vesting under state statute is different.
And again, the development agreement comprised the only regulations in place in the Isaguac Highlands, correct?
At that time, yes.
So, Mr. Nevin, where did you come up with this? Where and when did you decide that vesting ended when the development agreement ended?
You went back to the same place.
I'm sorry?
So this is, you're back to this--
No, I'm asking now, when? When did you decide that?
So that was part of conversations between myself and the city attorney.
And when did those conversations take place?
I can't recall the date.
Well, can you tell us the month?
I can't recall the month.
Can you tell us the year?
It was most likely 2017.
Okay. So in 2017, before you had the email exchange with Ms. Heim, in which you acknowledged we were vested, you had a conversation with the city attorney, and you decided that vesting ended when the development agreement ended?
I could briefly interject, Mr. Chairman. I would reiterate my prior statements and objections and directions--
He went back to the same place. I think you, I think you keep asking for what was that conversation between myself and the city attorney.
No. I'm asking you to tell us when you decided that vesting means what you and Ms. Sloman indicated it meant in the letter exchange on November-- whatever C4's date is. I copy--
November 2017.
There you go. So obviously, the conversation you're referring to happened before that, correct?
Yes.
So you never, in fact, communicated your new understanding of vesting to my client until your April 4th letter to me, correct?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Can you identify any document in which you said that?
I cannot.
And you countersigned a letter with Mr. Malaney the day before the council adopted the replacement regulations, correct?
I did.
Acknowledging that my client had submitted complete applications for its SDP and ASDPs, correct?
That's my recollection, yes.
Okay. So don't you think you were misleading my client into thinking you had yet again confirmed their vested status by acknowledging they had complete applications?
I do not. The genesis of that letter, that letter was begun many months before it was signed. You know, at the end of the day, when I signed it, it was at the direction of the city attorney, who was working with your firm to get that document signed. So I don't believe that I signed it with intent of misrepresentation of their status.
Well, you confirmed that they had submitted complete applications. What other reason would any applicant want confirmation that their application was complete, other than to know that it was vested and the city would process it?
Well, I think until the city council passed the replacement regulations, they had already deferred the decision once. We initially had, I think, moved forward a process to get it approved in December. And the city council, because there were still unresolved issues, they pushed it to March. There was, the same issues that were unresolved in December were still unresolved in March. As far as I can remember, there were issues that your client was concerned about. And so was I certain that the council was going to pass the replacement regulations? No.
Mr. Nevin, I'm not asking you about what you thought the council would do. I'm asking you what possible reason, you, well, let me rephrase the question. You knew that my client was seeking confirmation that its applications were complete, because that would be another assurance by you that they were vested, correct?
I don't know that I would connect those two pieces. They clearly saw value in getting the city's confirmation that they had complete applications, absolutely. What that means at the end of the day, I don't, I don't know.
The city never processed my client's applications in any way under the regulations in the development agreement, did it?
I have no idea.
You have no knowledge that it ever spent a single hour processing the applications, is that fair?
I did not have any idea.
Mr. Nevin, does the city have a West Main problem or not?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's a direct legal question, calling for a legal conclusion. We've been over this ground before, and I would respectfully object to that line of questioning for the same reason that I have previously.
And I find that an amazing objection, considering that Mr. Lell has asked this client about the West Main issue, and Mr. Nevin has testified in public and in writing about the West Main issue. And to say that he can't be questioned about his public statements and about his prior testimony to this hearing, because West Main is a legal issue, is simply not an objection.
Mr. Chairman, West Main versus City of Bellevue is a precedent sitting legal case from, I believe, the Washington Supreme Court. It is completely unrealistic and inappropriate to expect a layperson to answer a question like that.
And again, Mr. Nevin told the city council that the city had a West Main problem. I'm entitled to ask him about that. And Mr. Nevin went into the West Main issue in his testimony. This is cut, is simply an attempt to cut off a 100% legitimate line of questioning.
If Mr. Nevin has already made public comments on the West Main, I think he probably should validate or acknowledge the comments that he made.
Mr. Chair, I want to weigh in on this one a little bit, too. I think the question was pretty broad, asking whether or not he had a legal issue with the West Main case. That is a fairly broad, in general, question. I think if the question was more specific, it might be more appropriate. I think if the question was more specific, it might be more appropriate.
I believe my question was whether the city has a West Main problem or not.
That's right.
And I asked that question because I believe we've heard testimony both ways on that issue, but I'm happy to start again with a new line of questioning. In fact, we'll start with an exhibit. And it's an exhibit that's already in the record. C6, city itself offered the exhibit. Now, Mr. Niven, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is that you testified that you and Ms. Lohman both had a hand in writing this memo that was given to the city council and that you wrote the vesting portion of it. Is that accurate?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
Okay, and you recall what this is an attachment to?
So it's...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be mysterious. It's Exhibit C5. Let me just hand that up to you.
I have C5. So, C5 would be a staff memo to the city council land and shore committee dated November 17 of 2017.
Okay, and...
I think specifically it was dealing with those issues that were still being discussed by the council and the public as it related to the replacement regulations.
Right, and so I want to, if you would turn to the memo, which is the attachment, and then turn to page seven of the memo. There's Roman numeral four called vesting. And it says, "See Attachment 4."
Yes.
And Exhibit C6 is Attachment 4, correct?
It is.
And so, why don't you turn to the second page of the memo and the third paragraph from the bottom dealing with vesting, one of the paragraphs you wrote. Would you read that to us, please?
Yes. It says, "It is the administration..." Okay, that's bad English, sorry. "It is the administration's support alternative two as it is consistent with the vested rights doctrine and the decision of West Main v. Bellevue. Since the administration requires a land use permit to be issued prior to submittal of a building permit, a complete land use permit has been viewed by the city, by the administration and city attorney as part of the building permit process."
Okay, so you're telling the city council and the interested parties to whom Ms. Lohman is communicating that both you, the administration, and the city attorney agree the city has a West Main problem, correct?
So, that's what this says, and this is inaccurate.
And how and when did you correct the inaccuracy in this, Mr. Niven?
It would have been corrected maybe in a few different ways. One, with the applicant in letting them know that a pre-application was not a necessary part of the permit process. What happened with this is, so in November of 17, as we were deliberating on these remaining issues, there was a separate memo on vesting, and then when we moved into January of 18, the proposed vesting language in the replacement regulations changed. And we never went back to this attachment for clarification or correction, as far as I can remember.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Niven, but the only thing I heard you say about actually telling anyone that you think this was a mistake was you told the applicant, my client, that it didn't need to go through the land use process before applying for a building permit. Is that what you said?
I said they did not need to go through a pre-application process to start the land use permit process. That conversation happened. I don't believe we ever had the conversation with Shelter Holdings on whether a land use permit was necessary prior to the submission of a building permit.
And so, what does this sentence have anything to do with pre-Apps?
So, my understanding of West Main v. Bellevue was that Bellevue made pre-application meetings part of the process, so the decision, and again, I'm not a lawyer, this is my layperson's understanding of this, is that as an entity, if a city makes requirements, step requirements part of a process before you get to state vesting, all of those pieces, then you become part of that process. And so, if ultimately you require a land use permit and prior to that a pre-App, a complete application of a pre-App then constitutes a vested permit under West Main. That's my understanding.
And the city requires applicants to actually not just go through a pre-App, but to actually obtain a land use approval before it can apply for a building permit, correct?
No, we don't.
Well, that's what your own website tells applicants, correct?
That's what the checklist states.
Right, and so the checklist, which I'm a citizen, I want to know what I have to do to submit a building permit. I go to the city's website, I find a checklist, and now I'm referring to Exhibit S9, which is one of two exhibits from different years that have the same information, and it tells me that I need a land use permit notice of decision has been issued before I can even apply for a building permit, correct?
It actually doesn't say that. So there's a box that says, "Land use permit notice of decision has been issued." So part of a checklist is, you basically, our expectation is an applicant will check the items on the checklist that they include with their application. It does not say you have to have that land use decision, it's just a box on a checklist.
Okay, Mr. Niven, let's turn to Exhibit S9.
Yes, I meant S9.
Why don't you read the second sentence of the introductory language before the checklist begins, under Roman numeral I, application checklist.
Starting with four? The second sentence, starting with F-O-R, four?
No, starting with the word, "Please note..."
Oh, third sentence.
Sorry.
"Please note that permit applications missing one or more of the listed, one or more items listed are considered incomplete and will delay the permit review process."
Okay, and then the very first box is called pre-submittal requirements?
Yes.
And one of the pre-submittal requirements for building permit for a commercial or multifamily project is land use permit notice of decision has been issued. That's what it says, correct?
That is what it says.
And you're telling this commission, as you told it previously, is this information is incorrect?
I'm saying that this information is advisory to an applicant, and we had a conversation earlier about whether or not you could submit straight for a building permit, and we can go back to the Land Use Code if we need to.
Well, yeah, let's do that, Mr. Niven, and there's a section of the Land Use Code that we haven't talked about yet that I have copies of.
Want me to put it up on the screen? Since I don't...
I'm looking for my hard copy of it. I will know in a moment. So, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Since it's been an hour, maybe a short break, and I'll find this exhibit and we can resume.
No objection.
All right, we're back in session.
So, next exhibit is S-117. Mr. Nevin, I'm handing you S-117, which is a printout of two code sections. Do you read 1804-090?
Yes.
Please.
1804-090, concurrent building permit review option. All development proposals, including the optional consolidated permit review process, are subject to project permit approval prior to building permit application unless otherwise allowed by the building official.
Who's the building official?
His name is Harry Hinton.
So, this says, does it not, that the checklist is accurate? That you do have to get your project permit approval prior to building permit application unless Harry Hinton tells you otherwise, correct?
So, it's... Can I have a moment with our code?
Sure.
Thank you. So, my answer is going to be that 1804-090 and 1804-160 say different things to me. I would agree that what 1804-090 says is that the project permit approval is required prior to building permit application, but that's not consistent with this part of code. So, I guess... So, my response is going to be I believe we have conflicting code sections. And to my knowledge, we have not been asked for an interpretation on those conflicts as of yet.
So, Mr. Nevin?
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, go ahead. I can listen in.
So, do I understand you to agree that 090 is entirely consistent with the webpages that tell applicants, citizens, what the requirements are for submitting a commercial and multifamily building permit application?
090 is consistent with the permit checklist.
And so, 090 and the permit checklist, exhibit S-9, and there's another exhibit with an earlier version of that, those documents are consistent with the city having a West Main problem, correct?
No, I don't think that's correct.
Okay. So, you don't think the city has the West Main problem that you told the city council the city had in your November 2017 memo? If the city doesn't let someone apply for a building permit until they have obtained land use approval from you and Ms. Sloman?
I'm saying I don't believe that the way that the city is administering the code is to require a land use permit approval prior to the submission of a building permit as was evidenced by the VALE application who submitted their building permit prior to their land use approval due to concerns over the moratorium. So, I think in practice, we're not applying 090. I believe we're applying 140, if that was the number. I migrated off of it.
So, I'm sorry, which application are you referring to?
VALE. It's a multifamily apartment complex on Seventh at Locust.
And have you offered any evidence in this hearing about that application?
I did not because this is the first time it's come up.
So, you're telling us that the evidence that you have that the city allows people to disregard the checklist and 1804-090 is a specific applicant... one specific application?
To my knowledge.
Okay.
There might be others.
How about the hundreds of other applicants who you have required to go through the process?
My objective to that is I'm not aware that Mr. Nevin testified to that. It presupposes that conclusion and it goes beyond the scope of this rebuttal testimony. I would respectfully object.
Well, Mr. Nevin, tell us more about this project that you think demonstrates the city is acting consistently or inconsistently with 090 and the checklist. What's the... Can you spell the name of the applicant, please?
I don't... I believe the applicant is American Family. I don't know that for sure. The project name is VALE, V-A-L-E. It's on Seventh and Locust. And it's my understanding, again, I don't have concrete evidence, it's my understanding that they submitted their building permit prior to their land use permit being complete.
And you mentioned the moratorium?
Yes.
What did the moratorium have to do with it?
So, the city was in the process of considering a development moratorium for the Valley floor. And Seventh and Locust is on the Valley floor, so they would have been potentially impacted by the moratorium.
Okay. Any other examples, Mr. Nevin?
There might be. I don't have any to share tonight.
You heard the testimony from Ms. Heim that the city, in fact, did require my client to go through both the pre-application process and its land use approvals before it could apply for a building permit?
I believe that we told Shelter Holdings they had to have a pre-application meeting. I also believe that we clarified that that was not a requirement of the permit process later on.
And how did you clarify that?
It was either in a memo or it was... I think it was one of these exhibits. It's in writing somewhere.
I apologize, I'm looking for a new exhibit that... Okay, S-118. Mr. Nevin, this document is obviously... Well, it's called City Orientation Meeting Minutes on letterhead of Clark Design Group, PLLC.
Yes.
You recognize this document?
I've never seen it before.
Okay. It's a... What are meeting minutes that are provided to the city such as these?
I have no idea.
Okay. Well... This is a meeting minutes attended by a number of city employees, including Ms. Sloman and Doug Schlep, correct?
It's what it says. I have no idea if that occurred.
Okay. I'm just... I understand you've never seen this document before. It's just another set of minutes reflecting communications by the city on this issue. I'd like you to turn to the second page, please. Entry 2.5. And there's an entry there, LS noted, and I submit that LS is Ms. Sloman because she's the only person with initials of L and S in the meeting attendees. So, what did LS note at this meeting?
What this says under 2.5, which says dual-track ASDP and building permit, LS noted that the city does not typically allow a dual-track between the ASDP and building permits. The building permit may be submitted once the ASDP is approved.
Okay. So, is that entry consistent with 1804-090?
No.
Why not?
Because of the word "typically" would indicate to me that sometimes it is allowed.
Well, it sometimes means when the city decides it's allowed, correct?
I have no idea.
Well...
First time I've...
It's your department, Mr. Nevin. When does the city allow people to apply for building permits when they haven't issued... when the city hasn't issued a notice of decision on a land use application?
Anytime.
Anytime. And the example you've given of that is the American Family project?
I did.
Okay. So, Mr. Nevin, going back again to the checklist on the website, you think that clearly communicates to members of the public what the city's position is? That in fact, according to... I understand you are telling us that an applicant can come in and apply for a building permit without getting a land use decision? So, that was a compound question. Is it your testimony that an applicant can decide on the applicant's own whether to get a land use decision or simply go straight to a building permit?
Yes.
And is that what the city's checklist that's available to someone coming to the city and trying to see what the process is informs the person?
That's not what this says, no.
Okay. And that document, that checklist, has been on the city's website for years, correct?
I have no idea. I just became... just became aware of it and saw it through these proceedings.
Okay. Well, you just testified, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that it doesn't accurately explain the city's position, correct?
So, this is a 12-page document, right? I mean, it's 12 pages. It's... I didn't count the number of boxes. The intent is that an applicant would use this document to guide them through the application process. Is it the intent that all of the boxes are checked, even though that's what it says at the beginning? I would say no, but that's what it says, so...
How long have you been in your current position, Mr. Nevin?
Since 2015.
And I think you just said, again, that that checklist is not accurate and is misleading to a member of the public because the city allows people to come in if they want and apply for a building permit without getting a land use decision, correct?
I think this is a tool that we use to try and help applicants. I didn't say it was misleading.
Well, you just said that the city doesn't require what that checklist says the city requires. Isn't that accurate?
I did say that.
You did say that?
I did say that.
Okay. And how is that consistent with B1 of the rules of professional conduct that requires you to provide adequate, timely, clear, and accurate information on planning issues?
So, I would... I'm not debating you that this document could use to be clarified and cleaned up. It's probably on somebody's to-do list within my department. I didn't author this document. I think I said I saw it for the first time during these proceedings.
Mr. Nevin, you had a conversation with Ms. Heim about whether she had to go through all of the city's pre-application processes, even though they're not in the development agreement, correct?
Yes.
And in fact, Ms. Heim's notes reflect, I think, more than one conversation about that issue with you, correct?
I have no idea.
You do recall her testifying about it from her notes?
Not specifically.
Then you must have an independent recollection of discussing it with Ms. Heim?
I believe I wrote her a clarification, either in an email or a letter, indicating that the pre-application was optional and that they did not have to go through that process.
Okay. And my hope is that we can find that communication, Mr. Nevin. Are you aware that Ms. Sloman told Ms. Heim that optional means the city gets to decide, so it's optional with the city but mandatory with the applicant?
I believe that she did tell Ms. Heim that, yes. I believe that's accurate.
Now, Mr. Nevin, you were present when Ms. Sloman presented the PowerPoint slides to the city council that told the city council that the city had a West Main problem and that told the city council that the development agreement didn't address vesting, correct?
Yes.
Do you think telling the city council that there was a West Main problem, you telling the city or telling this commission that there isn't a West Main problem, you think those communications are consistent with B1 of the rules of conduct about clear and adequate accurate information?
I already said I believe that the memo to council was in error. I don't know what you're trying to get at exactly.
Well, I'm trying to get at the fact...
I mean, if you're gonna... if you're asking me if I think I've acted inconsistently with the AICP Code of Ethics, the answer is no.
Okay. Well, you sat there while Ms. Sloman told the city council that the development agreement didn't address vesting, correct?
Yes.
And you... last hearing you had in front of you your well-worn copy of the development agreement that addresses vesting, does it not? Or did you not?
So, my understanding, again, is that the messaging that we were giving the city council was, as it relates to the replacement regulations, that it was our understanding that when the development agreement reached its term... that when the development agreement reached its term, there were no provisions for vesting that survived that termination of the development agreement, and therefore, they needed to choose vesting provisions as part of the replacement regulations if they wanted it to be clear.
So, Mr. Nevin, we're gonna bring up onto the screen the PowerPoint slide that's already an exhibit in this proceeding. This is what you and Ms. Sloman together told the city council. The development agreement does not provide regulations or guidance on vesting of projects. And you're telling us that you think that is consistent with the Rule of Conduct that says you're required to provide adequate, timely, clear, and accurate information?
Yes.
The development agreement does provide regulations on vesting, doesn't it?
Not after it's sunset. So those exact words are not in the development agreement. I thought we've been over that.
Okay. In fact, there's nothing in the development agreement that says that in any way, correct?
There is no provision in the development agreement that talks about what happens to permits that are vested to the development agreement when the development agreement terminates.
Okay. So again, your interpretation of vesting is that it terminates when the regulations terminate, correct?
That is my understanding of vesting to the development agreement, that it terminates when the development agreement terminates.
Okay. And so, Mr. Nevin, again, recognizing that you're not an attorney, where did you come up with the idea that a contract can't bind the parties after the end of the term of the contract?
I think we're back to that same third rail. We've been circling around all night.
Okay. So you're relying on advice from the city attorney that you're not telling us about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't we switch gears for a minute, Mr. Nevin? In your testimony last time in response to questions from Mr. Lell, you talked about other projects in the city of Issaquah that have more than one F A R for them. Recall that?
I do.
Okay. And you gave very specific F A R numbers for those other, other projects?
I did.
Okay. And why don't we go through those other projects that you talked about? One of them was the Costco project, correct?
Yes.
And Costco is developing its headquarters pursuant to a development agreement, correct?
Yes.
And another project was the Swedish hospital medical office structure?
Yes.
And that's also being developed pursuant to a development agreement, correct?
Yes.
And another one was the Loft Project. I'm looking for my notes. Do you recall which one it is? The Gilman Lofts?
Yes.
And that also had a development agreement, correct?
Yes.
And then the other one was a, was a hotel?
Spring Hill Marriott.
I'm sorry?
Spring Hill Marriott.
Yeah. And was that subject to the Raleigh Development Agreement?
No.
Okay. So you would agree, would you not, that a hotel is very different than, in terms of its needs, than, than the kinds of projects that the zoning allows on my client's property?
No.
Okay.
Their zoning allows a hotel.
Okay. So what is the size of the site on which the Spring Hill Suites is located?
I don't think I have that information.
Okay. And what was the F A R that you said they had built to?
1.2.
Okay. And is there structured parking?
There is.
And, but you don't know the size of the site?
I don't.
How many hundred thousand square feet does my client have on, in the Issaquah Highlands?
I don't know that exact number.
Well, you know it's 20-some acres, correct?
Yes.
And there's, what, 40-odd, 45,000-odd square feet per acre?
Yes.
Okay. So we're talking about roughly 900,000 square feet of development potential?
I don't know. So they bought 1.2 million square feet from Microsoft. They then bought an additional-
I misspoke. I didn't mean development potential.
Okay.
I meant-
Land?
If they have to build to 1 F A R, they have to build 900,000 square feet of development, Just multiplying the number, 20-plus acres times-
Forty-three, five, sixty, times 20 is 871,200.
Okay. So almost 900,000 square feet of development is what the city is requiring my client to build in the Highlands, correct?
Under the terms of the 1.0 F A R, yes.
Okay. And did the city, you, last time you testified that my client hadn't presented any economic analysis to you, showing you that building 900,000 square feet of development in the Issaquah Highlands wasn't economically reasonable. I'm asking the question, turning it around. Did the city, do any study whatsoever to show that 900,000 almost square feet of development in the Issaquah Highlands was economically feasible in any way?
Did we provide your client with any economic analysis to that end? No.
No, not to my client. Did you provide any information to the city council in the legislative process to explain what the impact of that would be on my client?
We did not, to my recollection.
Now, you also testified last time, Mr. Nevin, that there was no problem imposing these requirements on my client's 20-plus acres in the Issaquah Highlands, because the city imposed the same requirements on property it owns in Talis?
I'm not sure I characterize it that way, but I think what I said was that the city has, owns a piece of property in Talis, and the same regulations in terms of F A R and structured parking would apply to that property.
And the city, in fact, owns two small parcels in Talis, correct?
Two, we own multiple parcels in Talis. We own two for development, yes.
Okay. And those are zoned for retail development?
One is zoned for retail development. The other is for a sustainable building project. So I think it's limited to residential.
Okay. So are these parcels joining one another?
No.
Okay. Well, let's talk about the one that is zoned retail.
Okay.
How did the city acquire that project, that property?
We acquired that property from Intercorp, who was building, I don't know the name of the project, but it was parcel 13 at Talis.
And why did Intercorp give you that parcel?
Because they didn't want to build the retail corner as part of the Village Square.
Well, in fact, Intercorp gave the city this retail property because it couldn't economically develop it, and the city wouldn't allow Intercorp to complete its residential project unless it gave the property to the city. Isn't that correct?
So Intercorp, so the regulations that are on the property now were not the regulations that were on the property when Intercorp gave the property to the city. Intercorp chose to give it to the city in lieu of building the retail space. At the time, the other corner across the street where Anchorhead Coffee and Wine Bar is now, was built by Intercorp, but it was a few years later. So whatever reason they decided to give it to the city versus building it, I don't know. That was what they chose.
Okay. I'm gonna offer an exhibit, S-119.
I don't recall.
It's a, it says it's a notice of decision issued to Dan Swallow of Intercorp.
That's what it says, yes.
Okay. So I want to turn your attention, please, to attachment 3, which is about halfway into the document. It has the words "attachment 3" in the upper right-hand corner.
Yes.
Do you have that?
I do.
And it's called, this document is called a memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
And I want you to read for us, please, recitals C, which start at the bottom of that first page, and then E at the top of page 2. And this is a memo of understanding with the city of Issaquah.
Correct. So recital C says, "In issuing a site development permit and providing plat approval for parcel 13, the city required that lots 83 and 84 be developed with at least 5,818 square feet, 5,818 square feet, of retail/office space. In perens, the retail/office requirement, under the terms of the parcel 13 permits and approvals, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the 55th residential unit constructed on parcel 13 may be issued, may not be issued, until final inspection of the shell space of the entire retail/office improvements on lots 33 and 34 occurs." Number D, T V C, just, okay, we're gonna assume that's Intercorp, "requested a revision to final plat condition number 3 of the Talis parcel 13 final plat, and in a decision of the hearing examiner dated October 20, 2011," assuming that says 11, sorry, my contacts are getting a little funky, "the deci, and in perens, the decision, condition number 3, to the Talis parcel 13 final plat, was modified to read as follows. At least 5,818 square feet of retail/office comma, including any interior community center square footage comma, shall be provided on lots 83 and 84. Issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the 55th residential unit may not occur until either, peren 1, unperen, the final inspection of the shell space for the entire amount of retail/office square footage is issued, semicolon, or to rights to develop the parcels, peren lots 83 and 84, unperen, are conveyed to the city or to another acceptable, to another acceptable, sorry, to the city for the purpose of fulfilling the non-residential component of the project."
So the city condition on the development was they either build out this retail office space or they give the property to the city?
That looks like that was the subject of this amendment, or this memorandum of understanding.
And then if you turn a little bit further, maybe half a dozen or so pages further to attachment 4, that's quitclaim D giving the property to the city, correct?
I'm gonna guess that's correct.
Okay. And what's the date of the quitclaim deed to the city? It's on the top of the second page of the statutory warranty deed.
2013.
So the city has owned this property for six and a quarter years. Has it sat vacant during all that time?
Well, yes.
And the size of the property is, is what?
I don't know.
Well, the city's requirement is that it be developed with 5,818 square feet of retail office, correct?
That's what this agreement said, yes.
Okay. So last time you talked at some length about how the, there's nothing wrong with the requirements imposed on my client, because the city imposed the same requirements on its property in Talis. This is the property we're talking about, correct?
Yes.
And that property has sat empty for over six years, correct?
Yes.
What is the city intending to do with retail property that has sat empty for six years?
At some point, we will market it and try to get a retail developer to build there.
So a couple of small parcels that have sat empty for six years, you think are evidence that the city's regulations imposed on I H I F C's almost 900,000 square feet are reasonable?
I do.
So what's the other commercially-zoned property in Talis besides these two small city-owned parcels?
The other commercial property is the office parcel. It was called 17B. It's not owned by that developer any longer. It was purchased by Issaquah School District for a middle school.
Okay. And is that property subject to the 1 F A R requirement?
It's subject to, I, I don't know. I have not reviewed the Talis replacement regulations. I didn't know that was gonna be germane.
Well, I thought you testified last time that the same regulations were imposed on Talis as were imposed on the Issaquah Highlands.
I did.
Okay. Well, then, there's a 1 F A R and a structured parking requirement on the property now owned by the school district, correct?
There is a, those standards are applicable to the school district as long as it's still zoned commercial.
Well, that's what it's zoned today. You haven't changed the zoning, have you?
I have not.
So you think that this middle school is gonna be built to 1 F A R?
I think the middle school will be built to standards that are applicable to the middle school.
That doesn't answer my question, Mr. Nevin. The city has imposed 1 F A R and structured parking on the only other commercial property in Talis, other than the two small city-owned parcels, and it's being developed with a middle school, correct?
It is being developed for a middle school, correct.
Okay. So once again, all you have to show that, you're the one who brought up Talis and said how the city's treating the, the commercial property there demonstrates the reasonableness of its treatment of my client- the reasonableness of its treatment of my client.
I believe we said retail, by the way. You're mixing retail and commercial? I think the comment was about retail. But I didn't review the transcript, so I might be wrong.
I might be wrong too, we'll find out.
Okay.
So, Mr. Nevin, you, in response to a question from Mr. Lell, if you have the transcript, I can direct it to you, but I, I'm not sure it's necessary.
What page is that?
Bottom of page 93. So, Mr. Lell asked, does the city of Issaquah itself own property within the Talis area? Your answer was, we do, we own retail property in Talis. The remaining part of the village square is owned by the city and is basically zoned, for lack of a better term, for retail development.
Right. So, so I think, you know, at least my intent was to really say the retail issue that Shelter Holdings was bringing up, we have the same issue on property we own at Talis. And our intent is to finish out the village square, which would mean at some point, when we have capacity, we will be working on that property.
Okay, so, could you also, since you have the transcript, Mr. Nevin, turn back to page 92. Yes.
It's the little numbers he's turning. 92?
Yeah, so, at the last question on the page, Mr. Lell asked, are the FAR and structured parking requirements contained in the Issaquah Highlands replacement regulations identical to those contained in the replacement regulations for the Talis area of the city? And you, your answer was identical, yes?
Yes. And they are.
And then, you were asked by Mr. Lell whether any property owners in the Talis area had, had contended that the FAR and structured parking would render development economically inviolable, and your answer was no, correct?
Correct. I didn't remember that there were any.
I'm sorry?
I didn't remember that there were any.
Well, you said no, and the only property owners who could have contended that were the city and the school district, correct?
No, at that time, it was Trimet Development.
Okay, and who promptly sold to the school district? And by that time, you meant...
Well, promptly is a year. The school district just sold, just bought it, like, this month.
Right, so you're saying that the school district bought the property since you testified two weeks ago?
It may be.
I mean, just a moment, we may be done, but I want to confirm. Mr. Nevin, how long have you been aware that the school district was purchasing the Talis property for the middle school?
I don't have a good sense for that.
Oh, they, they've been in, with pre-apps and meeting with the city about it for many months, correct?
They have had, I believe, maybe two pre-submittal meetings with city staff. I haven't been in either of those.
Okay, but you knew when you testified here a couple of weeks ago that that property was being acquired by the school district, correct?
I was in belief that they were deciding to buy that property, yes.
So, again, since you knew that, when you told this commission that no property owner had objected, no retail or commercial property owner had objected, you knew that the only one who could object would be the city itself because of the property it acquired from the developer, correct?
No, that's not correct. So, the replacement regulations were adopted in March of 18, were in March of 19. In March of 18, Trimet was still trying to push on a short plat and residential for their property. The school district, at that time, had not indicated to the city that they were looking at Talis. They were, there were some other properties that they were looking at in the city for a middle school, but we were unaware that they were looking at Talis when the replacement regulations were adopted in March of 18.
Well, Mr. Nevin, again, I'm talking about what you knew when you testified to this commission. You knew that the property was being acquired by the school district because they had been in meeting with your department about that issue, correct?
Well, but the question was whether or not the regulations in the Highlands were the same as Talis, and the answer is yes.
I don't think that was the question, but, thank you. But one, one more moment, please. Thank you, Mr. Nevin, that's all I have.
Mr. Lell?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to begin my redirect for rebuttal purposes with Mr. Nevin, but since we are at the one-hour marker, I would defer to the commission if it would like to take a break.
I think we would, I think we would enjoy a break, and let's take a break for 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're back online, so it's time to resume. Okay, now we're ready. Thank you. Thanks. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Lo?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Niven, I have what I hope are relatively few questions and redirect for purposes of your rebuttal testimony. First of all, I'd like you to refer to the document that was distributed and labeled as Exhibit S-112, and the cover email to that, which I believe was S-113. Read those, please.
I have an S-113.
I believe that S-112 was the first document that Mr. Schneider handed out this evening, and I can provide you with a copy if it's not available.
112 is from last time.
Oh, pardon me. It would be, he referred to 112.
Thank you.
Take a moment and refresh your memory regarding that document. For the record, this is an April 15, 2019 letter from Lucy Sloman, your employee, to Ms. Heim.
Yeah, and it's actually attached to 113, so I'm going to get it back.
Correct. Great.
Yes, we're clear.
And I believe you testified that you did not actually participate in the drafting of that document?
I did not.
Why is that?
I believe I was out of the office while this was being drafted.
But you have since reviewed it, correct?
I have reviewed it.
Do you concur in the substantive conclusion of that letter that IHIFC's preliminary plat application is not vested to the process or procedures of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement?
I do.
You agree with the substantive conclusion of that letter that IHIFC's preliminary plat application should be processed under the procedures specified by the replacement regulations?
I do.
I'd like you to please turn your attention to Exhibit S-115, also handed to you by Mr. Schneider in his cross-examination.
Yes.
This is the email exchange involving David Avanel Jr. Familiar with that document?
Yes.
Mr. Niven, was this email exchange taking place before the replacement regulations for Issaquah Highlands were adopted?
Yes, because it's dated August of 17.
Was this email exchange dated before the build-out period expired under the development agreement?
Yes, that would be September of 17.
Was anything in this email exchange intended to be or was an appealable decision under your understanding?
Nothing in this email exchange that I can tell.
Could you then go back, please, to Exhibit S-4, and this was a pre-existing document in the record, and you don't have a copy handy there?
No, I'm good. Okay.
Once more, could you please identify this document for the record?
Yes. Okay. So this document is the formal recommendation coming from the Urban Village Development Commission to the City Council, and it's signed by the Chair, Jeff Walker, on the 10th of May, 2018.
And to clarify, I believe what Mr. Schneider had asked you in his line of questioning, did the city process the Polygon decision at issue in Exhibit S-4 under the procedures specified in the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement?
That's my understanding, yes.
To your knowledge, did anyone implicated in that proceeding ever challenge or object to the city's processing of that application under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement?
To my knowledge, there were no public comments to that and no appeals filed.
That was going to be my next question, just for the record.
Oh, sorry.
Was there ever an appeal filed of that decision?
No.
Did you purport to issue a formal determination regarding vesting in any manner concerning the Polygon application?
Can you say that with a different word other than purport?
Sure. Sorry.
That's okay.
The attorney, I mean. Referring you back to a provision of the Issaquah Municipal Code that you've previously testified about, that's IMC 1801-050.
Yes.
And specifically the provision in that ordinance that empowers you as the director to make vesting determinations in consultation with the city attorney?
Yes, I do remember that.
Are you familiar with that provision?
Yes, I am.
With respect to the procedure used for the Polygon plat application, did you issue a formal vesting determination?
I believe we did issue a document to Polygon indicating that their plat was vested. I don't remember the date of that.
Did anyone ever challenge that decision?
No.
Or that determination that you made? I'd like to then turn your attention, please, Mr. Niven, to Exhibit C-4, previously existing document in the record. This is an email exchange involving yourself and Ms. Sloman.
Yes.
What's the date on that email?
That date was November 22 of 2017.
And I know that this is old ground for purposes of this proceeding, but could you please briefly describe the subject and content of your communications with Ms. Sloman and how they came about?
So Ms. Sloman was CC'd on the email between myself and Ms. Heim, and she then directly emailed me in response to my email back to Ms. Heim that indicated she was confused.
At the time of this email colloquy between yourself and Ms. Sloman, is it your understanding that IHIFC's SDP and ASDP applications at issue in this proceeding had already been submitted to the city?
I believe they had been submitted.
Thank you. I'd like to turn your attention next to Exhibit S-116. This is the AICP Code of Ethics that Mr. Schneider introduced as an exhibit in his cross-examination.
Yes.
Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I am.
Have you ever knowingly and/or intentionally breached any of the ethical requirements under the Code of Ethics?
Absolutely not.
In your opinion... Pardon me. If you could please turn to Roman numeral 2B of that document?
Yes.
And subsection 1, beginning with "we shall not deliberately or with reckless indifference fail to provide adequate, timely, clear, or adequate information on planning issues."
Yes.
Do you believe that you have fulfilled the ethical requirements of this mandate?
I believe so.
In questioning for Mr. Schneider, he characterized your April 4, 2018, letter as involving a quote, or your quote, "new understanding of vesting." Do you remember that characterization?
Vaguely.
Was the position on vesting expressed in your April 4, 2018, letter a new position for you?
No.
Could you expand on that?
We had started a very meaty conversation with the City Council on vesting as early as, my recollection was maybe late October, early November of 2017. So by the date of that letter, it had gone around enough times that it wasn't a new conversation.
Thank you. I might then like to turn your attention to Exhibit S-36.
Okay.
Are you familiar with this document?
Let me look at it real quick. Yes.
Could you briefly describe and identify this document?
So this document, which is entitled "Letter Agreement Regarding Completeness Determination for IHIFC Commercial LLC's SDP Applications," and it's addressed to Lucy, but ultimately was signed by Patrick Malaney, Gary Young, and myself.
Could you please turn to page 2 of that letter agreement?
Okay.
And read paragraph 5.
5. It's the shortest one, thank you. "The parties intent in executing this letter agreement is for the limited purpose of establishing the criteria for obtaining SDP completeness determinations and..."
Do you construe this document, then, in light of that paragraph that you just read, as purporting to establish or define any vested rights in IHIFC's various permit applications?
Not, in my opinion.
Thank you. Did you then read paragraph 6?
Yes. "The parties acknowledge that the council has not yet adopted replacement regulations for the Grand Ridge Development Agreement. Thus, depending on the language ultimately adopted, comma, the parties may have differing positions regarding the effect of the replacement regulations on IHIFC's proposed development. Therefore, both parties reserve all legal and equitable rights, comma, positions and remedies, comma, and execution of this letter agreement shall not be construed as a waiver of either party's respective legal rights, comma, positions and remedies including, comma, without limitation, comma, the legal requirements of the development agreement, comma, the effect of the replacement regulations, comma, or vesting, period."
Thank you. How do you construe that provision as it relates to any vested status claimed with respect to IHIFC's ASDP and SDP applications?
Well, what I read out of this subsection 6 is that there's some acknowledgement that the parties may have a different interpretation of vested rights and that the execution of this document does not compromise either party's differing opinions, if there were differing opinions.
Could you just read the first four lines of paragraph 7 of that document?
Sure. So 7. "Subject to the parties' reservation of rights in paragraph 6, comma, and without agreement between the parties as to whether the SDP applications already have vested or whether further processing of the SDP applications is required following adoption of the replacement regulations, comma."
Thank you. How do you construe that reference in relation to the processing of IHIFC's SDP and ASDP applications?
Well...
I'll rephrase the question if you prefer.
I mean, so, not a lawyer, but basically, this is, subsection 7 is a tolling agreement between the parties.
Do you read, do you construe the text that you just quoted out loud as suggesting that the city is required to process IHIFC's ASDP and SDP applications under the replacement regulations or the development agreement?
I'm sorry, I was reading. Now, can you please say your question? Sorry.
Oh, we'll move on to the next question.
Okay.
Thank you for reading that aloud. Could you then turn your attention, please, to Exhibit S-9, also a pre-existing document that's already been placed in the record?
Okay.
This has been a subject of much discussion, as you're aware, during these proceedings, but could you describe and identify this document one more time for the record?
Yes, so this document, and there are, this is one specifically for commercial and multifamily building permits submittal requirements. We have other such checklists on our webpage intended to help applicants understand what they should compile to form a complete application. they should compile to form a complete application. Because every permit is different, many times, or what my understanding of the intent is, is that most applicants discuss these requirements with city staff in terms of, you know, for example, is smoke control design required, which is listed on page 11, or not, is, you know, what of the mechanical section is required? So it's a little bit finer-grained, and I would expect it to be a little bit more interactive than for somebody to be able to just understand what's intended by this 12-page document.
Do you ever tell IHIFC that a land use permit would be necessary before it applied for a building permit?
I did not.
Are you aware of any member of your staff that made a similar statement like that to IHIFC?
I'm unaware of any of those conversations, so no.
Did IHIFC ever indicate its intent or desire to submit a building permit application for its property?
Not to me.
Are you aware of them expressing any such intent to any other member of your staff?
I'm unaware of that conversation.
Did IHIFC or its representatives ever do or say anything that indicated that they were even aware of this document before this proceeding, before the Development Commission?
They never raised it to me before this proceeding as conflict or in any way.
And are you aware of them raising that to anyone else at the city, any member of your staff?
I don't believe so.
I believe you testified in response to questioning by Mr. Schneider that you were not even aware of this document until this proceeding. Is that an accurate characterization?
I have not looked at this document before this proceeding. That's accurate.
And finally, Mr. Niven, you touched on this during your original testimony, but I'd like to refer your attention back to IMC 1801-050C, the vesting provision of the Issaquah Municipal Code.
Yep.
I believe that you've testified to this, but I will ask it once more for the record. Do you believe that the provisions of that section supersede the web document identified as Exhibit S-9 to the extent of any inconsistency?
Yes.
Why is that?
Because this is council-adopted city code, and the documents on Development Services' webpage are authored by the administration, by staff.
Thank you. Could you please turn to Exhibit S-117? Mr. Niven, when you construe the provisions of the Issaquah Municipal Code, do you view or construe individual code sections in isolation, or do you attempt to harmonize all code sections to the extent possible?
The intent would be to, hopefully there's consistency with all code sections. Where there is ambiguity or inconsistencies, we try and look to the bigger picture to try and make a decision on what was intended with the adoption of maybe a particular ambiguous section.
Now that you have these two code sections in front of you, Mr. Niven, with respect to IMC 1804-090, the concurrent building permit review option provision that Mr. Schneider handed you, and IMC 1801-050C, how would you construe these sections and attempt to harmonize them?
So my first lens would be 1801 being a general provision trumps 1804, which is a procedure.
Thank you.
So that's where I'd start the evaluation.
And is it your position, then, that any inconsistency between 1801-050C would, and 1804-090 would be resolved in favor of 1801-050C?
That would be my initial take, yes.
Mr. Niven, did IHIFC ever raise this issue or cite to you the provisions of 1804-090 or 1802-180 as set forth in Exhibit S-117 before this hearing?
No.
Are you aware that they may have raised that issue to any member of your staff or anyone else at the city before this proceeding?
I don't believe so. Code interpretation should always funnel through me. Funnel through me, sorry. I've been talking for a long time.
And just to clarify, one final time for the record, does the city administer and construe IMC 1804-090 in a manner that is inconsistent with or that would supersede IMC 1801-050C?
No.
Mr. Niven, do you recall Mr. Schneider's questions to you regarding, and I think I'm pronouncing this correctly, the Vail application?
I remember the conversation about Vail, yes.
Could you please expand upon that? It's the first time that that project application, I believe, has been referenced in these proceedings.
Well, it came up in context of this conversation about 1804-090 and that the city's actions were to not allow for a building permit to come in in advance of a land use permit. And I provided Vail as at least one example, a recent example. I know that that's not true, that we would allow for a building permit to be submitted in advance of completing a land use decision as it's currently stated on the checklist that we've talked about quite a bit.
I know you're, there may be many other applications out there in the ether of the city's current and historical processing, but do you believe and understand that the Vail application was anomalous in that way, or do you think that that was indicative of how the city generally treats other applicants?
It is my belief that if someone came in to submit a building permit in advance of their land use permit, that we would allow that application to be submitted.
I'd then like to turn your attention, please, to Exhibit S-118.
Okay.
This also is a document that I don't think had been introduced previous to tonight's proceedings. By its title, it's indicated a memorandum, it's apparently authored by the Clark Design Group. And do you recall Mr. Schneider's questions to you about this document?
Well, his questions to, he had questions related to 2.5.
Correct.
But I've never seen this document before tonight.
And that's where I was going with it, just to clarify. You had no previous knowledge of this document before this evening?
No, I was not in the meeting. Nobody gave me a copy of this document that I know of or asked me if to render an opinion on any of it.
Thank you. Could you please turn to section 2, or paragraph 2.5, the specific provision that I believe Mr. Schneider was questioning you about?
Sure.
See that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Does the last sentence of that paragraph, which reads, "The building permit may be submitted once the ASDP is approved," does that reflect your understanding and administration of the city's permit processing framework in Issaquah?
So, you know, this paragraph, because I have no context, you know, there's words like typically allow and may and not must. I mean, if the second sentence said, "The building permit must be submitted once the ASDP is approved," that reads to me very differently than maybe submitted. Again, I don't know if the conversation that surrounded this particular issue was, here's how we do things, you can pick another path, but this is how we like to do things. I don't know, I wasn't at this meeting.
If that second sentence of paragraph 2.5 had read that a building permit may only be submitted once the ASDP is approved, quote unquote, would you agree or disagree with that statement?
I would disagree with that statement. It's clearly inconsistent with code.
Thank you. Then have you turned to Exhibit S-119?
Yes.
This was the... Notice of Decision for the Intercorp Project. Original decision date listed as May 28, 2008, and it was apparently revised on February 25, 2013.
Yes.
Do you recall this document?
Yes.
I believe that Mr. Schneider referred your attention during his cross-examination testimony to the memorandum of agreement, or the agreement that was appended to this document. Do you recall that?
The memorandum of understanding, I believe, yes.
This is, I believe, labeled as Attachment 3 to Exhibit S-119.
Yep.
Were you, do you recall being involved in the drafting or negotiation of this agreement personally?
I was involved personally in this, yes.
Could you describe the nature of your involvement and the extent of your involvement?
This was... So this was originally, again, back to the timeline of relevance, so I didn't start being Development Services Director till 2015, November 2015. This predates that, so this was them, I was involved in this in my role as Economic Development Director for the city. And so, yes, so it's, I just want to be clear, it was me being Economic Development Director, which is why I was negotiating this with Intercorp, not me being Development Services Director.
Okay, so just to clarify, you were acting in your capacity as the city's economic services or economic development director and not in some type of a regulatory permitting capacity? Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. But you do have familiarity with the document and the...
I do.
...context in which it was arisen.
I do.
Was the memorandum of understanding appended as Attachment 3 to Exhibit S-119 the product of an arms-length negotiation between the city and the landowner at the time?
Yes.
Could you describe how those negotiations came to be, if you recall them?
So my recollection of the conversations we had with Intercorp, so the Village Square at Talis, the development agreement allowed it to be developed in a couple different configurations. One would have been all on one parcel, and initially, they had described it as being somewhat Whistler-like. But as the project built out, the master developer chose to split the Village Square into two pieces, basically, one on the east side of Shiber and the other one on the west side of Shiber. So two smaller parcels, kind of divided by a street, and that was allowed under the development agreement. So this property constituted the western piece of the Village Square. And the parcel itself, before it was platted, was one parcel, and it went from Shiber all the way up to Shangri-La. Sorry for these names. And so when they platted out the property, they created the parcels down at Shiber, at the corner of Talis Drive and Shiber, for the retail piece. And what the city did is we said, and because Intercorp, to our knowledge, they do build some non-residential space as part of their portfolio, but they hadn't done that in the city. And so part of the concern that we had and why we put a requirement for them to build out the non-residential space prior to getting all of the residential built is, we really didn't want it to be the last thing that got built. And so as they started building out their plat and their project, they came back to the city and indicated that they really didn't want to do that. They really didn't want to build the non-residential corner of the project and half of the Village Square. And so, you know, at this point, and sometimes you kind of back yourselves into not a great outcome, one way or the other. I mean, we could have either just said, you know, you have to build it, or else you don't get any more occupancies, which would have meant half of the residential project would have stayed undeveloped, whereas the other half already had people moving in, so that's kind of a bad outcome. The other outcome is, we took ownership of the property with an understanding that at some point, we would actively market it and try and find a buyer. So that's the way this played out. We kind of, I think, had two options, neither one were great, and we picked the one to take the property ownership, take the asset, and then let them build out their residential space.
Can you explain why the city had an interest in trying to ensure that retail or office improvements would be made on the site?
Yeah, so, you know, both Issaquah Highlands and Talis were kind of sold to the community as live, work, play, residential, retail, commercial, you know, parks and trails, things of that sort. They both took on very different characters. I think Issaquah Highlands and Talis are very much different. But at the end of the day, you know, we believed that TriMet, who owned the office parcel, was sincere in what they were going to build. They unfortunately, I think, hit the recession, kind of got things lined up at the wrong time and got put on hold. As far as retail goes, you know, part of what we heard from the residents at Talis was, you know, they wanted some retail space within their neighborhood, if possible. And at the time that we made this decision, there was no retail yet. There is a small amount of retail in Talis now. We also had conversations with the Talis homeowners about a community space. Issaquah Highlands has Blakely Hall, which is a great kind of HOA-run community space for them. And part of what we were hoping to maybe get out of this was maybe a retail space and a community center space for the Talis homeowners. All that has just kind of been shelved for right now, just because we haven't had kind of the bandwidth to work on it.
Okay. And just to clarify, was the landowner's agreement to this memorandum of understanding generally and the provisions that we've just discussed specifically, was that voluntary?
Oh yeah, this was their idea.
Was there any coercion on behalf of, by the city in relation to this transaction?
I don't believe so, no.
Was the underlying permit approval decision or the regulatory approval decision ever appealed?
No.
Mr. Niven, do you recall your testimony and Mr. Schneider's questions to you this evening regarding the content and effect and reach of the Talis replacement regulations?
Yes.
And I believe that you testified that in relation to the FAR requirement, and I think you said the structured parking, but correct me if I'm wrong, that the provisions of the Issaquah Highlands replacement regulations are identical to those in the Talis replacement regulations. Is that accurate?
To my knowledge, yes, they're the same. They're the same.
And there was testimony that you may recall regarding the extent to which the Talis replacement regulations and the FAR requirement really just applied to the city-owned property in Talis. Do you recall that testimony?
I do.
Mr. Niven, does anything in the Talis replacement regulations limit the scope and reach and applicability of the FAR requirement to just the city-owned property?
No.
What does it apply to?
It would apply to the commercial property as well.
Okay. So any property subject to those regulations within the Talis area, if it was going to develop or redevelop in the future, would be subject to the FAR requirement? Is that accurate?
Anything that's non-residential.
Okay. Thank you. And in the Issaquah Highlands area?
Yes.
I believe there's been some insinuation or maybe perhaps even some testimony that the FAR requirement really is only limited to IHIFC's property. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Is that an accurate characterization?
No.
Why is that?
It would also apply to Grand Ridge Plaza, which is the retail space. So right now, it's basically non-conforming. But if it were to redevelop, it would need to comply, is my recollection of the replacement regulations. But again, Lucy's going to have probably a better answer because she's more intimate with them than I am. Sorry, it's getting late.
Fair enough. But to your knowledge, Mr. Niven, this is where I'm going with the line of questioning. Is there anything in the replacement regulations that specifically calls out IHIFC's property, particularly for being subject to the FAR requirement or any other provision of Chapter 1819BIMC?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might have one brief moment to consult with my co-counsel before concluding, I would appreciate it. No need for a recess, just a brief moment to confer.
more for the record. With respect to the SDPs and ASDPs respectively for the medical office facility, the retail facility, and the storage facility, each of these applications were submitted after the build-out period under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. Is that your understanding?
That's my recollection of the timelines that were presented earlier.
And with respect to staff's recommended option for vesting under the replacement regulations, preferred option of staff, as I understand it, would have preserved vesting, would have essentially recognized vesting for IHIFC's various projects. Is that accurate?
Staff's initial recommendation on vesting was that vesting would occur with a complete application, which they had complete applications submitted.
Just to clarify, the staff's original recommendation was not limited to state law vesting, i.e., limited just to preliminary platting and building permits?
Mr. Chairman, I have to object. I didn't ask a single question about recommendations of staff for the replacement regulations.
I withdraw the question. That's fine. Thank you. And I have no further questions of Mr. Niven. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm afraid I do, in light of the new testimony. So, Mr. Niven, I understood you to testify in response to my questions that you didn't think there was any significance in terms of vesting to the end of the build-out period. Did I misunderstand your testimony?
That I didn't think that there was any significance for vesting in terms of the end of the build-out period? Was that what you asked?
Yes, I understood you to tell me, I asked that question, and I understood your answer to be it was the end of the development agreement and not the end of the build-out period.
That's my understanding.
Okay. So why does it matter that the applications for the SDPs and ASDPs was submitted after the end of the build-out period if it doesn't matter?
I don't know.
So can we go back for a moment to the code sections, Mr. Niven, that you talked about? And I think you said 1801050, and 18 in the code section we introduced tonight, which is 1804...
090.
Let me get my copy of that. Are in conflict with one another? Is that your testimony?
Yes, I do believe they're in conflict.
And would you explain the conflict to us, please?
So, under C, it says, "Nothing in this chapter shall be interpreted to require an applicant to obtain approval of any other permit or approval from the city prior to applying for a building permit." And what 1804090 says, "All development proposals, comma, including the optional consolidated permit review process, comma, are subject to project permit approval prior to building permit application, unless otherwise allowed by the building official."
Well, but, Mr. Niven, 1804 is a different chapter than 1801. Why are they in conflict?
Because they don't say the same thing.
Right. And so 1801050 is completely irrelevant to 1804 because it says nothing in this chapter, and 1804 is a different chapter. So 1804 applies. There's no conflict between them, is there?
I disagree.
Okay. Where's the conflict? You read language that says nothing in this chapter. 1804 is a different chapter.
So if you would like a formal interpretation from the Development Services Director, I'd be glad to provide one.
No, I'm asking for your testimony tonight, Mr. Niven. You're not going to pass this off to a formal interpretation. Where's the conflict?
The conflict is, to me, both these sections read completely opposite.
Yeah. One of them, 1804090, you already testified is consistent with the online permit checklist requirement. And the language you just read does not in any way conflict with it because it says nothing in Chapter 1801. So 1804 is valid and completely, completely consistent with 1801. And if it's not, tell me why.
So in my opinion, 1801 trumps 1804 because 1801 is general procedure, general provisions. 1804 is procedures.
So are you aware of the traditional canon of statutory construction, Mr. Niven, that says the specific trumps the general and not the other way around?
I'm not a lawyer.
Now, Mr. Niven, in response to my questions about Exhibits S-12 and S-13, you said I had to ask Ms. Sloman about them because you hadn't read them. And in response to Mr. Lell's questions after the break where you met Mr. Lell, you came back and said you agreed with them, correct?
I did.
So your review happened in your meeting with Mr. Lell?
It did.
And you recall that at the year, several meetings ago, when you testified the first time, you testified, as you acknowledged last time, that one does vest a process under the development agreement, correct?
I don't remember that, no.
Well, it's in the record twice now, Mr. Niven, and it's late, so I'm not going to bother finding it. But I assure you, you did do that. And now we have a document. Let's go back to Exhibit... It's S-4 that is already in the record. Hold that up, please. Okay. I had, the last time I had you read the first whereas clause in this document that you were copied on, would you read the beginning of the second whereas clause, please?
Sure. Whereas, comma, pursuant to Appendix L, processing of the Issaquah Highlands, Perrin's, Grand Ridge, and Perrin, two-party annexation and development agreement, comma, the UVDC held a public hearing on March 20, 2018, and...
You can stop there. I just wanted you to confirm that in this document, the development, the UVDC expressly said it was processing this pursuant to Appendix L, correct?
Yes, that's what it says.
Okay. And you are the person in the city responsible for vesting determinations, correct?
In consult with the city attorney.
Right. The code doesn't say the city attorney in consultation with the development director. It says it the other way around, right?
Yes.
These are your decisions that you're responsible for.
Yes.
And you've treated Polygon as vested to Appendix L of the development agreement, and you're telling this commission now, after you met with the city attorney, that my client is not vested, even though they're completely similarly situated, correct?
I didn't say I think they're similarly situated.
No, I added that.
You did.
So if they're not similarly situated, what's the difference?
I would have to consult with my staff on that.
So as you stand here tonight, Mr. Niven, there's no lawful basis for distinguishing them, and yet you're treating one as vested and one as not, correct?
I don't know that answer.
Why not?
Because I don't know what the lawful reason is, why they were treated differently from a processing standpoint.
Well, Mr. Niven, you just met with the city attorney and came out and told us that it was, you agreed that my client was not vested, yet you treated Polygon as vested. So I'm asking you, what is the basis for your distinction, treating one differently than the other?
I think we're back to Third Rail.
Okay. So you're blaming the city attorney again on your conduct?
I'm saying that the city attorney is helping me to make decisions pursuant to the code.
But you, it's your decision, Mr. Niven. You've already agreed that you are responsible. So you have no reason for doing or saying what you're saying, other than that you met with Mr. Lell in the 10-minute break here tonight, correct?
I'm saying that what my responses to the difference in processing is a result of conversations with the city attorney, yes.
And you have no other grounds for saying what you're saying?
I have no other grounds.
Now, Mr. Niven, you testified about Exhibit S-9, the submittal requirement checklist. You told us more than once that you never saw it till tonight, and yet you also testified in response to Mr. Lell's question that most applicants discuss this, these requirements in the checklist with city staff?
That's my understanding.
So you testified that you have personal knowledge that most applicants discuss these requirements with city staff in a document that you weren't aware of until this proceeding?
I know. What I said was, that's my expectation, is that they discuss it with city staff. I have no idea what actually happens. I'm not, I do not do permitting.
That's all I have.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So I think we have, move on to a second witness.
I'm happy to begin with our next rebuttal witness, which would be Ms. Sloman. And I'm also conscious that we've been going for at least an hour, and I'm happy to take a break if that's the commission's preference, either way.
How much longer are we going tonight?
I'm also happy to take a break and begin my rebuttal questioning of Ms. Sloman at the next meeting, if that's the commission's preference as well. I anticipate my direct questioning of her probably will be about an hour and a half.
So after me makes it unlikely to get down to the most hearing, and make the most possible...
As tonight as we can.
Okay. We need a break, short break, or can we go, let's continue on. Let's start here.
Thank you. Our next rebuttal witness is Lucy Sloman. Ms. Sloman, would you please acknowledge that you continue to be under oath from your original appearances before this proceeding?
I am.
Have you been present for the entirety of these proceedings?
Yes.
Have you listened to all of the testimony of all of the other witnesses?
Yes.
Did you hear Ms. Heim and Mr. Young during their respective testimony express frustration regarding the allegedly inconsistent statements made by city staff in relation to the vested or non-vested status of IHIFC's various project applications?
Yes.
Are you a land use attorney, Ms. Sloman?
I am not.
Have you received formal legal training?
No, I have not.
When you were interacting with Ms. Heim regarding IHIFC's various project applications throughout 2016 and 2017, did you know that Ms. Heim was an attorney?
No. In fact, I believe the first time that I met her, she brought an attorney with her to the meeting.
To your recollection, did she ever introduce herself as an attorney?
Not that I remember.
Do you recall approximately when you became aware that Ms. Heim was an attorney?
During these proceedings.
During these proceedings, before the Development Commission?
Yes.
Thank you. With respect to all of your various meetings with IHIFC's development applicant team, do you know or were you aware that Ms. Heim was taking notes?
Yes. I mean, lots of us took notes in the meeting.
Did Ms. Heim ever offer to share her notes with you?
I don't remember her doing that, but I wouldn't know without going back and checking my email. Actually, I would say, associated with these permits, I don't. I remember following, during the replacement regulations review, she would sometimes follow up with her notes and thoughts following a commission or council meeting. That's the only time that I remember off the top of my head.
In your personal and professional experience, Ms. Sloman, is vesting a common discussion topic between city staff members and permit applicants?
No. Not until the last year or two, last few years.
Have you ever had conversations with other project applicants concerning vesting or non-vested status apart from the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement expiration process?
The moratorium. And I did not tend to have discussions with applicants. I would direct them to the Director Niven. I would direct them to the Director Niven.
In variously referring to IHIFC's STP and ASTP applications as being vested, what did you understand that the city meant by that term?
In the context of these proceedings?
In the general timeframe of 2016 or 2017, when the topic of vesting apparently came up during your meetings and other communications with IHIFC and its representatives, that's what I'm referring to. There have been, throughout this hearing before the Development Commission, has essentially involved allegations of who said what regarding vesting. And what I'm trying to understand, and the basis of my question to you, is what did you understand that term to mean as it was used by the city in those conversations or communications?
Well, I don't think we understood it in the legalistic way that it is being used now. I think, to some extent, we used it to talk about how long a permit was valid for, as opposed to this very specific intention related to the development agreement.
Has your understanding of term vesting evolved or otherwise changed as a result of these proceedings?
Yes, but I'm not sure I'm clear. But, yes.
And just to clarify, was the city's or your use of the term vesting always consistent with the legal meaning of that term, as you now understand it?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Could you expand on that, please?
Well, these are very specific interpretations related to development agreements, contract law, land use law, and so first of all, as I said, we didn't deal with it very often. Second of all, early on, we agreed that this was the purview of the Director and in consultation with the city attorney. And I tended to not talk about it. I tended to leave that up to Director Niven, or if he had, he and I had discussed it and he had clarity with the city attorney, then I might use that information. But I did not make any determinations on my own.
But if I, I believe I understood your previous testimony, you may have misspoken or mischaracterized the term or concept of vesting. Did you ever mischaracterize your use of the term vesting in your dealings with IHIFC, as you understand that term now?
Yes, because, as I said, we sometimes used vesting in an equivalent manner to how long the permit was valid for, and I now understand that those terms are not synonymous from a legal position.
To clarify that response, Ms. Sloman, did you, are you saying that you sometimes inflated the-- Do you sometimes mischaracterize vesting as meaning the permit rights that were inherent in an issued permit?
So would you try to reframe your question one more time, please?
Ms. Sloman, in your opinion, or your professional understanding, is there a difference between vested permit application rights and the rights that accrue from an issued land use permit?
I understand that now. I did not understand that then.
Could you expound upon that?
Well, I think the example would be that IHIFC and in Ms. Heim's testimony has talked about, for instance, we were talking through various permits and how long they were vested for. And one example was a site development permit, and we said that it was vested for three years. I didn't, my note, that's in my notes. I shouldn't say that I said that. And I now understand that that's how long the SDP is valid for, and we were using that from the IMC, which does not describe it as a vesting in the context of vesting. It's talking about how long a permit's valid for.
Do you have any idea why that confusion arose in your mind, why you would have used one term versus another, and mixed and matched those concepts?
Well, I just don't think we had much experience with them. It was not something we talked about very often. We, it just wasn't something we had a lot of experience with. I guess that's--
Could you please turn to the email exchange referenced in Exhibits C3 through C5? There's obviously been much testimony and discussion and argument concerning this interchange. I'm sorry to keep going over ground that's already been tilled, but I think it's an important point, apparently, from the applicant's perspective. But I'd like you to refamiliarize yourself with those documents, if you could, please. Specifically, the November 22, 2017 email colloquy between yourself and Mr. Niven. 22, 2017, at 10:36 a.m., where you said, "Shouldn't that be clear in the response?" Okay. What was the purpose of that statement? Back to Mr. Niven.
I was just trying to understand his intent, or how this communication was unfolding.
Did you ever provide any follow-up clarification or communication to the applicant on that point?
Not in this email chain. I think there were other times that it was conveyed through other means.
How was it conveyed by other means after this email?
Oh, after this email. Well, let's see, that's on the 22nd. So after this email, I think it was in early to mid-December, there was a memo to the council, probably for the December 18 memo. I think it's a December 12 date on the memo. And there was a chart attached to that memo that the council had asked for the status of a variety of permits. And in going through those various permits, we identified whether they were vested based on state law or based on the replacement regulations current language.
Okay. Could I have you then turn to Exhibit C7? I think that's the document you're referring to.
Yes, it's part of that.
Okay. Could you identify that for the record again, please?
What that document is?
Yes, and specifically the chart that you just referenced.
Okay. So C7 is an email, and I guess as part of that email was a memo to the council from Keith Niven and myself dated December 12, 2017. And on the second page was a table listing all pending permits, which included permits in both Isiqua Highlands and Talis.
And with respect to IHIFC's pending ASTP and SDP applications, what did this chart attached to your memo indicate?
That for the retail center, the medical, the office, mixed-use building, which is not part of these proceedings, the medical office building and the storage building, that those, they're vested by proposed language.
And if I understood your testimony just a few minutes ago, Ms. Sloman, follow-up to your colloquy with Mr. Niven in the email exchange on November 22, 2017, was essentially this memo? Was this, is that correct, that you, that this, the substance of this document in Exhibit C7 was intended to basically clarify staff's position? Is that an accurate statement?
I don't know that it was intended to clarify staff's position. We were constantly talking to various apps, well, constantly, we're regularly talking to various applicants and communicating with them in a variety of means. Sometimes it was by email, sometimes it was in meetings, and sometimes it was in the materials that would be sent to the commission or council. So like the applicant, the council was also asking questions about the status of various permits and the basis of those relative to vesting. And so this chart was meant to clarify for everyone our kind of understanding, and IHIFC would have received this as part of the packet distribution for this council meeting, as an interested party.
And when you refer to everyone, what is that in reference to? Other project applicants with then pending permit applications, members of the public or the council? Who is everybody?
Well, I think the main interest was from the decision-makers, which was the council, and then various applicants who had permits that were not complete relative to what would be happening with them based on the language in the replacement regulations.
Is the vesting status reference or references contained in the December 12, 2017 memorandum and the chart attached to it consistent with what you had previously told other applicants?
Well, the reason I'm pausing is I just don't remember what, when I had what communication or that Keith had with applicants. So I just don't know specifically the order of events. But I guess what I would say is that the interested party emails were often property owners with pending permits or undeveloped property who might have an interest in how these things were decided.
Was the content of this chart, this memorandum, inconsistent with your recent statements or communications to IHIFC?
I don't think so. I thought, I think this was consistent with our conversations and some of our, because around this time in November was when, well, not this time, in November, I think middle to late November was when the Land and Shore Committee of the council began to focus on vesting. And so I have gone back and looked at some of those slides, and they generally indicate that the vesting was, there was state law and there was the replacement regulations, and that depending on how the council decided, certain permits may or may not be vested.
And again, timeframe for that, Ms. Sloman, those discussions, I believe you said was, was it October, November of 2017?
I think it was November. The replacement regulations vesting language, I think, came out in October, I think, or maybe early November. I think it was October. And so as the council was whittling down, or the council committee was whittling down various issues, vesting became a regular topic that was both touched on in some of the memos and presentations, and then in their discussions, I assume.
And the context of those vesting discussions, was that part of the council's or the Land and Shore committees, and maybe the council's broader policy discussions concerning the replacement regulations?
Sure. I mean, that's what they were mainly focused on, was the policy discussions related to lots of different provisions, not, they didn't focus on every single thing in the replacement regs. There was maybe six to eight topics that they focused on.
And were those meetings where vesting was discussed and the evolution of the vesting provision for the replacement regulations during that timeframe, were those open public meetings?
Yes.
Did IHIFC's representatives attend those meetings?
Most of the time. I mean, I can't say every single meeting, but my memory is that they attended most, if not all.
During that general period, did IHIFC say or do anything indicating that they knew their ability to have their ASTP and SDP applications evaluated under the standards contained in the development agreement, but ultimately be subject to a city council legislative determination?
So I'm not sure they said it that directly, but it seemed like that was clear, because they were writing letters. They were either testifying and/or writing letters to the council or the council committee on a regular basis. So it seemed like the intent of that was to influence the decision the council was making.
So just to clarify, to your understanding and your observation, Ms. Sloman, IHIFC understood that this vesting issue was being addressed as a policy determination of the Isiqua City Council? Is that an accurate statement?
I would assume so. I don't know whether they thought of it as a policy matter, but I think they understood that it was within the realm of things that the council was discussing and making decisions on.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce a new exhibit, if I could, please. I believe that this is Exhibit C54, but I will have to defer to the chair.
Mr. Chair? We've reached our 10 o'clock point.
I'm happy to break at this point. This is probably actually a logical breaking point, if that's the commission's preference.
Hold the exhibit. Okay. Let's, I appreciate your willingness to hold off. So now, given that we have reached the agreed-upon time adjourning tonight, we'll continue the public hearing on tonight's agenda to May 7. I understand that all commissioners are available that night. The parties have an estimate of whether they will be able to wrap up all their witnesses on May 7, or do we need to schedule another night?
The city, at this point, has no intention to call any further rebuttal witnesses beyond Ms. Sloman. I fully intend to complete my direct rebuttal questioning of her within, I would say, probably an hour, hour and 15 minutes. I would have to defer to the applicant as to the number and length of any applicant rebuttal witnesses.
So-- So I expect we will call at least three and perhaps as many as five rebuttal witnesses, I don't think any of them will be particularly long, but there will be multiple rebuttal witnesses, it is my hope and desire and intent to finish on the 7th, but I think it's unlikely, I think we may have to go a little bit into an additional meeting, so I would ask that we schedule it, and my understanding is there was a possibility at least that the 15th might be available.
Right, I, I understand that the parties would be able to meet May 17, or May 15, I apologize, is that correct? We'll come find you, so the public hearing, the public hearing on tonight's agenda will be continued to a special meeting of the commission on May 7, and the council chamber is here at 6:30, and the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.